Hello, everybody. Hello? All right, you can hear me. I can barely hear myself. Well, welcome, everyone, to the July 23rd, 2025 City v. Edina Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the rest of the commission, we are grateful you are here. To those in person and those tuning in remotely, say it every time, but your participation, your curiosity, and your feedback is vital to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina, specifically regarding the ways in which we'd like to use our land. So tonight, we have one public hearing. If you'd like to participate by testifying and sharing a testimony on the matter, you can do so later. We'll provide you instructions for those participating in person and those who are tuning in remotely later when we get to that part. Just have your phone ready. And just remember all feedback that's made its way to us. We consider before every commission meeting. The best way to do so is through our engagement website, www.bettertogetheredina.org. That is the best way to find anything out about upcoming, current, or prior developments. I'll go quickly through the agenda so you know what to expect. We'll start with a call to order, then a roll call, an approval of the meeting agenda for tonight, followed by the prior meeting minutes. Then we have a community comment period, then the one public hearing, and then we end with chair member comments and staff comments, and then adjournment. So with that, we will call the meeting to order. Then roll call.
Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Honneman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting minutes from June 25th.
I have an edit.
Yeah, so if we have a proposed edit, we'll hear it, and then welcome a motion with that proposed edit.
It's just a motion to change the total vote counts for the first public hearing from nine to eight.
Correct. Yes, we will get that updated.
Do we have a motion with that proposed? Was that a motion with proposed edits?
Mm-hmm. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Next, we have the community comment period, and this is your chance for any resident who is here in person to testify about any matter not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes to do so. You can come up to either podium, state your full name, address, and speak away. We try to welcome anything and, you know, act on it or get staff or city council updated on it and try to make any changes if we can, or just inform the community with any of any of the potential recommendations you might have. Is anyone here for a community comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our one public hearing. So tonight's public hearing is for a conditionally used permit for Rivian at the Galleria. Just so you know what to expect for those tuning in remotely with any public hearing, if someone proposes to do something in our city that doesn't quite conform to our code, they have to apply to do so, and then the then staff will kind of guide them through what they need to get from them from detail-wise, and then kind of research the exact situation and put together a staff report where they consult with other commissions and departments throughout the city to try to get all and every piece of feedback into that staff report. And that staff report usually includes a recommendation for approval or denial of the request. Staff then puts all of this into a presentation tonight, which looks very nice so far. After that, we typically have a back and forth with staff, just question and answer. We will combine that period again, like we've done in previous sessions, with the presentation that Rivian might want to put forward, the applicant tonight. We'll just roll right into that and then do a question and answer together after that. Following that, we'll do the public hearing. Similar to the community comment period, you'll have three minutes to speak, and then after that, we bring it back to the commission to deliberate and then make a recommendation for approval or denial. So with that, Addison, take it away.
All right. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. This is a request for a conditionally used permit for Rivian at 3510 Galleria to occupy space at Galleria Mall. Rivian would have a small vehicle showroom of about 31,000, or 3,180 square feet located inside the mall. Additionally, there would be up to six vehicles on site available for test drives. Customers could place an order for a new vehicle on site. However, for-sale vehicle inventory would not be stored on the property, and any purchased vehicles would be shipped directly to the customer, not to Galleria. The property is Zone Plan Commercial District 3, which lists automobile agencies selling new unused vehicles as a conditionally permitted use. The comprehensive plan guides the property as community activity center. Primary uses include retail, office, lodging, entertainment, and residential uses combined or in separate buildings. So this image here just kind of gives you an idea of where the tenant space is within the mall. It's on kind of the western side of the mall. This is the proposed floor plan, just kind of showing you what the showroom is going to look like. You can see it's not very big. There's just a couple of vehicles in there and a little bit of office space and kind of some like a manager's office and a little break room. They would, you know, make some changes to the interior storefront, but there would be no changes to, you know, the footprint or the exterior of the mall, other than potentially some exterior signage. They're not doing any kind of expansion or changing the exterior facade. They provided some renderings of kind of what some of their showrooms look like in other locations. This is one from Ventura, Florida, White Plains, New York, Hayes Valley, California. And then here, this is just showing the location of where the vehicles would be parked. So this parking area is actually below the mall, underneath the mall. They would have four vehicles down here for charging. There's, I believe, already vehicle chargers here. I believe Rivian would be replacing them with their own chargers. And then there would also be two vehicles stored here, but no chargers. So as I mentioned, we're here tonight because automobile agencies selling new unused vehicles are listed as a conditionally permitted use in the PCD III sub-district. So here's our pyramid of discretion you see here with conditional use permits. The city is has some discretion in these cases, generally limited to the guidance in the zoning ordinance. So in looking at the zoning ordinance, Section 36305 says that the council shall not grant a conditionally used permit unless it finds that the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use meets this criteria. So number one, does not have an undue adverse impact on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing or proposed improvements, will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets serving the property, does not have an undue adverse impact on the public health, safety, or welfare, will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of other property in the vicinity, conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district in which it is located, as imposed by this chapter, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So just an overview of some of the staff findings. So with a showroom of just 3,180 square feet and just six vehicles available for test drives, the scale of this use is pretty small. It's not likely to have any noticeable impact on government facilities, utilities, services, or existing or proposed improvements that would be any different from any other retail user, retail tenant at Galleria. Given the scale of the proposed use, there should not be any noticeable difference in traffic than there would be for any other retail tenant. There is adequate capacity on the adjacent roads to support the proposed use. The use will not have an undue adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare. The use should have no impact on the normal or orderly development and improvement of other property in the vicinity. The use conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the PCD III zoning district. And since the proposed use would provide education and greater access to electric vehicles that would support EV adoption, staff find that the proposed use is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan and the Climate Action Plan. So staff tonight is recommending that the city council, or that you recommend to the city council, that they approve the conditionally used permit, subject to the following conditions. All operations of the business should be consistent with the application materials included in the August 19th, 2025 city council packet. I'm sorry, that is a typo. That should be, oh, no, that would be the correct meeting date, August 19th, 2025. The vehicle showroom space within the mall shall be limited to 3,200 square feet. No more than six vehicles shall be stored on the property for test drives. For-sale vehicle inventory may not be stored on the property. Vehicles purchased by customers may not be delivered to the property for pickup, and any changes to these conditions requires a new conditionally used permit. So that is all I have for you. Would you like the development team to come up and give their presentation? Okay. Have you guys come up?
Thank you.
All right, so you can use these to scroll. Perfect. All right. Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Sam, and I'm here with my colleagues today to share a little bit more about Rivian and our excitement to have a retail presence here in this community. Rivian is an American automotive manufacturer founded in 2009 with the goal of helping to accelerate the global transition to zero emissions transportation. We Rivian design, build, sell, advance electric vehicles, along with the software and services that support them. Our vehicles are proudly assembled right here in the United States. We currently have a few different vehicles on the road. The R1T, which is our flagship pickup truck, the R1S, which is our flagship SUV, and the Rivian commercial van, which we use to electrify delivery fleets for commercial customers. Our products are sold directly to individual consumers and commercial clients. We're also looking to the future with our next generation vehicles. We have the R2, which is a mid-side platform coming in next year, 2026, which will be followed by our highly anticipated R3 and R3X models. And those can be displayed here at the very end as an appendix for you guys to take a look at. At a glance, we currently have about 32 open retail stores today across the United States that are within malls, outdoor lifestyle centers, and standalone retail, which we will briefly showcase towards the end of our presentation. So thank you again for your time, and now I'll pass the presentation over to my colleague, Madison, who will briefly discuss about the program of our store.
Hi, everyone. My name is Madison Groothaus. I'm with Reschark Design Studio, Architectural Record for Rivian. We can kind of go through this next part pretty quickly. Is it this one? There we go. It's just the spaces up to provide visibility into our brand through education displays as well as vehicle displays. Madison did a good job of going through kind of the floor plan here, 3,180 square feet. The showroom is very interactive and focuses on vehicle education, so there's a lot of digital displays, interaction with the vehicle, and some lounge seating. The back of house has some break room area, employee restrooms, private offices, and storage. We are replacing the entire storefront with new aluminum storefront wood doors. And then the chargers, as Addison had mentioned, we are just replacing what's existing into the garage. There's four chargers down there that we're replacing with Rivian chargers and rebranding that area. And then the two spaces on the street level are not EV charging spaces. They're for demo drives, test drives throughout the day.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Madison. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Siobhan Lee. I am the lead design manager for this project. So given the layout that Madison just explained, I just want to emphasize that our showroom is really for educational purposes. We want the customers to come in and feel comfortable, asking us questions, and being able to touch and feel the vehicle. So we've, we have many touch points throughout the retail store for customers to take a look at the exterior paint, the interiors, and talk with our staff to understand how they can configure them to their, to their liking. We have educational touch points throughout the retail stores so that they can understand how the charging works at home and understand how they can plan their trips throughout the country with the Rivian charging network. We also like to engage the community and have activities to bring people into the stores and use the space as kind of like an external living room. So we welcome families, we welcome children to just come and hang out. There's a lot of soft seating, a lot of books and artwork for people just to come and like stay connected. And lastly, there will be demonstration drives at this location, and customers can hop in one of our vehicles, take a lap around, and see if they like our vehicles. And so the next few slides are just some of our active sites that Addison has already showcased already. So we've got retail stores throughout the country. As you can see, the millwork and the finishes are very bright, very welcoming, inviting. We have, you know, we have, we have showrooms inside malls and also standalone sites as well, as you can see in Pasadena. And this is just a larger image of what you would expect from our store inside the Galleria shopping mall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd open it to the rest of the commission for any questions you might have. All right. Let's, oh. How about we just start down there? I saw your hand first, and we'll just go this way.
Thanks, guys. I have a couple of questions. I guess let's just start on this page. Why do the chargers underground need to be replaced? And I guess is there any, I presume those are included because of some city standard for EV chargers? And have we, in changing them to Rivian chargers, is that going to negatively affect non-Rivian drivers who may previously have charged there?
I guess that was my understanding, was that you guys would be replacing the chargers that are already at Galleria? Is that correct? Okay. So do you guys want to speak to them, like, I guess why they may be replaced?
I know this much about EVs, but I do know that there are different kinds of chargers, and not everything is universal.
Yeah, so they, the Rivian vehicles or the EV chargers will be replaced, the current chargers will be replaced with Rivian chargers, but however, those chargers are universal with the adapters.
So if they're Tesla today, I don't know what they are, and I used to charge, once, once you've changed them over, I still should be able to charge.
That's correct.
Okay. Do Rivians include a self-driving component?
At this time, that is still in development, so no.
I do have a little bit of pause around if one of the reasons for not approving a CUP had to do with safety, if having a vehicle in a crowded parking lot using self-driving capabilities was maybe, is a component of why this was a conditional use in retail? So I'm trying to think through that. Will there be batteries in the vehicles that are in the store?
That's correct. Yeah, so customers will be able to interact once they come into the store with the vehicle. And so in order for the vehicles to do that interaction, it would need to be in place, too.
So, and I know, Addison, you said that we wouldn't have answers to the fire marshal's report, but I guess just making sure that one of the conditions, if it moves forward, is addressing the fire marshal's concerns there about batteries or sprinklers, like that's all baked in?
Yeah, so the memo from the fire marshal and building official that was added to the packet today included some recommendations of things that are not addressed in the fire code directly. So as of right now, they are recommendations that-
They are only recommendations.
They are only recommendations. So the question of whether or not those could be like added as required conditions as part of this conditionally used permit project, I don't know the answer to that tonight. If there's something you want to recommend, I think, feel free to recommend it, and then obviously, we will follow up between now and the city council meeting, work with our city attorney to see if that's like a viable option.
Okay. And then while we're on the fire marshal's memo, he had working hours, and I know that was a recommendation, but is he, are we saying that we have to have a different set of, he would recommend different working hours than the rest of Galleria?
Those were referring to the hours of construction-
Oh.
-for doing the tenant, the finish of the tenant space.
Got it. Okay. That's all my questions.
And I'll start by following up with this one. I suppose my question was about fire, too, and I appreciate having this in here, because right, like, these will have battery engines versus having a combustible engine. Is there setting any precedence? Do we set a precedence? Would we allow, like, a combustion engine car to be in there? And is there, once again, would be setting something up that would be difficult for the building department to take care of?
From a zoning standpoint, no. I mean, we wouldn't look at this any differently if it were an internal combustion engine vehicle being stored in there. I don't know about the fire code, but I think the issue right now is that, from what the fire department staff have said, is that the fire code is a little bit behind on addressing this issue. So I don't, I wouldn't think of it as like setting precedent at this point, because it's not something that's in the code. It's, the use is allowed. It's not prohibited by the code. So these are just suggestions at this point from the fire marshal.
And it's also minimal. It's not like there's a huge tank in there or something, or-
Correct. I think one of the recommendations is that the vehicles be at like no more than 25% charge. I think they said that that is kind of their practice anyway.
Okay, okay. And then I had a question about the business model. Does the financing process happen here, too, or is it literally just education and then the financing of the vehicles, or does that happen online?
Yes, all the financing transactions will happen online. That's correct.
Okay. I think those were my only questions. Thank you.
No questions? Yes. Okay, I just wanted to pick up on the parking spot piece, because you asked about the parking conversion, right? But instead, you know, I'd be able to park my test or whatever. Understand, my understanding is no, because those spots are going to be permanently occupied by four Rivian vehicles now. So now those are no longer available to people with EV that would be able to see in the Galleria, correct?
I believe these, we'll have to follow up with you, because I think we do have dedicated stalls for test drives. So as far as the quantity of what's going to be available for dedicated drives versus not, if we can follow up with you on that, that would be appreciated.
Okay, okay. Because I think most likely, most of us would want to see an outcome where we're not eliminating EV spots by permanently placing Rivian vehicles there. And if you were to have to place Rivian vehicles permanently in spots, that you'd have to add EV infrastructure to accommodate that, make up for that loss at the Galleria. The only other question I had was the parking map. If you maybe pull up the diagram of the spots proposed? This is, this could be a very silly question, but I'll ask it regardless. Those highlighted spots right up there, given their proximity to the front and entrance, are those, those aren't handicapped or anything, or, you know, except handicap spots today? We're not taking away from any accessible spots like that? Okay, okay. That was, that was my only question there, just making sure that we didn't eliminate, eliminate premium parking for people that need it, so.
I might should add something. Paul, I work at Galleria. I'm a property manager there. So my understanding is that Rivian is not going to take up all four of the current charging stations there? They will take up two. So there will be two remaining that are universal chargers for any EV to hook up to. But I will, I will commit that Galleria, as well as the Westin, we're in current conversations with Tesla about bringing in additional Level 2 chargers on both of the properties. Not committed to that yet, but we're in, we're in discussions with Tesla about bringing more, because we see it every day. There's more and more EVs in our parking lot, so. And the current four that are there are an amenity to our tenants, I mean, and customers, where we don't charge for it. It's an amenity, so we try and put a two-hour limit on there. So Rivian will take up two of those and have four dedicated Rivian locations, and they'll be branded, and then two of them will remain Galleria EV chargers. So just want to clarify.
Okay, okay. Are you going to charge Rivian to charge there, those two spots?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Exciting stuff, EVs. I have just a few questions, just on the operations, just so I can understand the process a little bit better. This is really a location where it's a showroom. Folks would come see, feel it, feel the material, check out the colors, these kind of things, get a sense of it. And if they're so inclined, you would take them to the test vehicles, drive around. Any sense of where you would be going for that test drive? Is that something that you guys have mapped out yet, or understand just the route you would be taking residents, I mean, potential customers?
Yeah, so that, that's-
Hey, Sam, can we have you stand for this? Just it's better for, it's better for TV.
See, it's a feedback there. So there, it's site-by-site conditions, depending on the jurisdiction and just the site layout of the area. So when we go from store to store, the route that we would choose, our operations team would just do, usually a couple of weeks prior to opening, would just do a survey of the area, make sure the regulations are safe to do the test drive routes, whether it's, you know, regulating to science itself or to any city codes, plus kind of incorporating the experience of customer vehicles, whether it's the nearest on-ramp to a freeway, just to be able to give them that feel of a vehicle. So it is kind of conditioned from site to site on how that's routed.
Makes sense. Just along those same lines. So if, let's just say I'm a Rivian curious person, right? And I do like it. I think you mentioned that in somebody memo, the paperwork that you guys would provide, wouldn't I, would I be able to purchase from a paperwork perspective the vehicle at that location and then have it delivered to my house, or do I have to go somewhere else to do the paperwork to purchase the vehicle?
That's a good question, and I don't know the answer to the paperwork portion. But from a customer, if you were to walk into a store, you would be able to purchase that via, with a web online. So all that documentation would happen via internet. As far as the registrations and so forth, I believe that was something that I have to follow up on, but I don't know that at the moment.
Gotcha. Along those same lines, too, so you mentioned that we'd be selling accessories, right, at this location. I'm guessing you can get a Rivian cap, maybe a jacket, right?
That's right.
A few things. At what point does an accessory for the vehicle turn into a car part for a vehicle? And here's what I mean. So I could probably get, and I've never driven one, but I'm guessing you could buy stuff that you could put into the vehicle, like some thing to put on a steering wheel, make it more comfortable, other things like that. But could you buy tires, for example, or things that would not be an accessory to a vehicle, but actually a car part to a vehicle? How do you differentiate between the two?
So at our stores, we sell the accessories that are, what do you call it? More for the personnel itself. So your jackets, your T-shirts, your water bottles, and so forth. Actual vehicle parts would be purchased through the web and then serviced at the nearest service center. So for instance, tires, in a sense.
Gotcha. So it's more like comfort items in the vehicle is what would be sold versus-
That's right.
-parts. So, you know, I'm driving my Rivian, something breaks, I don't drive to you guys' store and pick it up, essentially, right? I'll have to go. And where's the nearest Rivian dealership where I would actually go to get the parts if I had to?
So customers can pick up their vehicles at the nearest service center, which is at St. Louis Park. So that's our nearest location.
Gotcha. Okay. Electric vehicle, no gas emission, right? So from a-
That's correct.
From a air pollution problem, probably no noise either, right? You know, we have folks walking around in the Galleria every day for exercise, right? Sound testing, I'm guessing, folks, I get to play with the sound system, but I'm sure you guys would manage that, right? Let's make it too loud. Those bits. And this question might be more for the property developer at Galleria. But if another competitor, you know, they see you guys go in there, wow, Rivian could get in there. Tesla might want to- Tesla might want to get in there, BYD might want to get in there, and, you know, maybe other vehicles. And they would all be permitted use, but, well, conditional use. Do you see any friction that would cause other competitors to question or want to interact or come into your store as a result of Rivian coming in?
Yeah, so thanks for the question. Galleria at this point is very committed to strictly just Rivian. And as you know, we're confined with space there. We're not as big as most other malls. And so we try and be very careful and selective with what kind of tenants we lease space to there. And so when we have a specific one-time use, like a Rivian car, we would not sign a lease with a Tesla. And Rivian wouldn't want that partnership either. So we're both committed to each other, Rivian at Galleria and Galleria with Rivian.
Thank you. All right, that's it for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Do you have any other Rivian dealerships in the state of Minnesota?
No, we do not.
So, and at this point, is it only service center in St. Louis Park?
Yes.
And are you going to be open once you get rolling beyond the construction piece? Are you going to be open on Sundays?
Yes, Monday through Saturday. Operating hours are around 10 to 7:00, and then Sundays, yes.
Okay, so even though dealerships can't sell cars on Sunday, you'll be open in accordance with the Galleria rules and regulations, basically? That's who you're following? Okay. I think those are my only questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
I said one, I think it's for Mr. Lewis. So Galleria was built some time ago. I don't know what year. Are they, is the Galleria compelled by any city ordinance to have a certain number of EV charging stations?
No, I don't, no, I don't believe so. I don't think there's anything right now. So like, I think the ones that they put in, they did so on their own.
Right. So that's a customer service decision on their part?
Correct.
Of how they balance providing those resources or not?
For newer buildings, where, you know, the green building policy applies, then, you know, the city can require it through that process. But the ones that they have, I believe they put in on their own.
Okay, thank you.
All right, probably more for Addison as well here, but my understanding was there's no new car dealerships allowed in the city edina, and that's why they're going under the CUP in this case? Or is that not a fair assessment?
I don't think it's a fair assessment. I think, yeah, this has been a conditional use in the PCD III district for probably some time. So I think when it was written, it was probably envisioning, you know, more of like a traditional car dealership that's going to have more of that impact, which is why here, I think from a zoning standpoint, we have very few concerns because it's just a much less intensive use than a traditional car dealership.
Okay. It is my recollection that at one point either Southdale or the Galleria did host vehicles on display in, you know, and not just for monthly purposes or something, for a special occasion, but actually in store, in a storefront. I think it was Southdale down in the lower level. I'm not sure, but I mean, is that, was that under a conditional use permit as well? Or do you recall?
Not to my recollection, at least not during my time here. I don't, did they actually have cars on display?
Yeah.
For sale? Yeah, I guess we, we don't know the history on that.
They did. I mean, it was, and maybe it was even, I'm not sure who was, I don't want to speculate. But anyway, yeah, I mean, it wasn't that long ago. I mean, it was five to 10 years. I always think it's shorter than it was, but it was probably closer to 10 years back. I guess my, I have a few different concerns. The 25% charge situation, is that both for the interior, the cars that are stored inside and outside?
I believe that's just for the ones that are stored inside, was the fire marshal's recommendation. For vehicles that are being stored inside, that they'd have not more than a 25% charge.
And then I guess as far as maybe a bigger concern is turning the shopping center parking lot kind of into sales space, where really there's nothing else being sold out, out in the lot outside. There's going to be signage out there, vehicles parked out there 24/7, at least in those upper spots, the ones down below won't be seen as much. The current congestion in that particular lot, I mean, the whole place is, can get busy. But that particular lot where they're peeling two spots off, it's a very popular spot to park. And obviously, there was some negotiation with the mall for those. But I guess I don't know if I have any other comments, other than the fact that, you know, we're going to start seeing signage out in the lots and then other tenants are going to want to be, there are the exterior signs, I understand, on the building. But this would be, one of the pictures showed, the rendering showed a couple spots reserving those, those two spots. And I don't know if there's a limit on the size of that, or if it's more like a handicap parking size. Obviously, it's going to have their logo and image on there. I think it just takes the whole retail thing outside of the wall, the walls of the mall and brings it into more public spaces. Just something to think about going forward. Question also arises, like what, how do you, obviously, the models change from time to time, so what, how do you access that? Are you rolling it through the, one of the front doors of the mall? How do you get them in and out? It looks like the doors you're proposing in the buildout are not, it doesn't appear to be large enough, maybe they are, to roll the vehicles in and out?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So we'll, the storefront that we displayed, that we were showing, is custom large enough for vehicle swapouts? And so because, as I mentioned earlier, we have our new vehicle forthcoming as well. So we will do vehicle display, we'll get swapped every so often, for just for the customer branding. And then as far as the access goes, we are working with the landlord and company to provide a safe and feasible access for our vehicles to go safely through the mall and into our store.
Yeah, is her, is her current door on the mall that you can roll those through? Or will there be, will that be part of the buildout?
That'll be part of the...
So switching out the doors to the mall?
Yes, sir.
Just along those lines, yeah, something on the fire marshal note said, and again, we don't know if they're following this or not, but mentioned preferring a garage door setup. And obviously, the location where you're at, there's panels on the outside, there's a transformers right on the outside, there's not, not access from the outside wall. I mean, I guess what I was envisioning was you'd put some sort of garage door from the exterior into the back of that space, but you've got a break room back there and different things. So it doesn't appear that that was going to be how you were going to swap those cars out. So that was why I had that question. Let me just see here. So those four spots that have the charging stations, those are the only four in the whole, that whole block right now that are available, right? I think that's about all my questions. Thank you.
All right, with that, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Thanks for standing and...
I did have one more on this. Again, it was on the note we got today from the fire marshal. There was a note about SAC determination. Any idea why that's in there? I mean, I don't think there's any...
I think that the building department, when they issue the building permit, you know, that's the opportunity that they have to collect that SAC fee. So they always want to make sure the Met Council agrees that the SAC determination, you know, it's not changing based on what was there before.
Yeah, so you're running through the...
They just make the Met Council tell them if any additional SAC fees due.
I think in some of the other write-up that we received in the packet, it did mention that the vehicles inside the, inside the store would not be operational. But it sounds like they are, they will have batteries on them, so they'll be somewhat operational. They are just regular cars, I would assume, with maybe the drive disabled or something like that?
Yeah, that's correct. So they're, they're in what they call, I think, display, display mode for customer interaction. So it's a low state of charge so that it's really the lights and the little, the glamors that works within the vehicles that's only operating. And then as far as someone driving that, the component or the vehicle itself is locked. And so that software is built into the vehicle.
Yeah, I was just wondering if perhaps the SAC determination was regarding some special fire protection system or something that might be in there, but I guess that's not been determined yet. I wouldn't think they'd use water to put it out, a fire anyway, so. Okay. I think that was all I had now. Sorry.
Good, thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. And I'm applying to do this. This is a public hearing, so we've asked a lot of questions. Now we're going to let the community weigh in. Does not look like we have anyone who is here in person to participate. Is that correct? Okay. So I will just go right into kind of giving the rundown for how you can participate remotely. So for those tuning in who might want to testify, this is how you do so. Call the following number, 312-535-8110. Enter access code 2633-905-5355. Then password 5454. Then press star three on your keypad to get in the queue to start speaking. Since we have a one-minute lag, we will wait about a minute for those to catch up, see if any jump in the queue. You have three minutes to testify, similar to the community comment periods. State your full name and address, and we will let you know when your time's up. In the meantime, we'll wait here.
I have no callers on the phone yet. But because there is a short delay in the broadcast, I'd recommend we wait a minute or so, giving people time to call in. My clock shows that it's 7:44, so I will come back to you when I have a caller or at 7:45, whichever comes first.
Thank you.
It is now 7:45, and I still don't have any callers, so I think it's safe to move forward with your agenda.
Thank you very much. I'd welcome a motion to close a public hearing.
Motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move, the public hearing is closed. Now we take it back to the planning commission to deliberate on this. Energetic one, energized one, right? Powerful one, electric one, yeah? Okay, yeah, you got it.
Not really, but sure, yeah. Well, I just have some, some concerns, mainly around the changing the exterior of what a mall looks like today with the signage and different things and how that might propagate from what might potentially be small signs to larger signs and things like that. I'm sure there's codes for that as well. But, and the fact that all car makers are making EVs would kind of open this up for more, more vehicles in other malls and other places across the city, which I'm not saying is a good thing or a bad thing, but just seems to be different than what we've been used to. So I guess I brought up the other concerns I had, and I don't need to reiterate those, but I guess I feel this may not be the right, right thing for the Galleria. They're, you know, they're all cities here on behalf of the Galleria, and obviously is for this, but I have heard from several residents that were against it in addition to the Better Together comments. There was the four I saw, there were three against, one for. And the one for really said it was due to, I guess, Key Cadillac being so close to the Galleria, I think was the reasoning listed there. I guess it's just more so in changing the way we're dealing with the outside of retail locations, I guess is my main concern. So that's all I have.
I'm supportive of this. I guess I don't know enough about the, the safety concerns that I've heard to know whether it's truly dangerous or not. I just don't know. And so because I don't know, I don't feel comfortable saying no to something that I can't really explain why it's dangerous. And I know I have several acquaintances who store their own vehicles in garages that are attached to houses where their families live. And it seems like Galleria and Rivian insurance carriers would have an interest in this being a safe thing to do. So on balance, other evidence makes me think it seems like an acceptable thing to do. So I'm not persuaded by safety concerns, although some of that might just be ignorance. Secondly, I don't think we're empowered to require any number of charging stations, although I might personally like to have more rather than less. I don't think we, as a planning commission, are empowered to tell Galleria how many charging stations they should have, at least according to current code. And I'd leave it to the Galleria to decide what happens with, with those charging stations.
I'm fully supportive of this idea. I've had the opportunity to be in other Rivian dealerships, which to even call this, to even call something like this a car dealership is kind of a misnomer and is very misleading, I think, because it's unlike any other dealership. You know, in terms of the experience, in terms of the vibe, in terms of what they're trying to do. So I think this fits in. And somebody on Better Together edina had made a comment about how it fits perfectly with the Yeti store that's in there. And I think that that's very apt, and it's certainly closer to something like that. And in the Rivian dealership that I've been in, they have, they have, they show a film, and it's all very comfortable, and there's food, and it's very experiential. It's not just about, it's not about selling a car at all. It's, so I, so I think it's helpful to not think about it as a dealership. And I wanted to also address some of the comments in Better Together edina, which have a concern about that, that they think that, that the gallery is interested in doing this just because other stores have moved out, and that it isn't a fit. So again, I would, I would say the same to them. And I think it's interesting for the, for the people that brought up the idea that they don't want a dealership, or they're afraid for safety or something like that. And some of the, it sounded like the residents might be people who live... it sounded like the residents might be people who live right there in the hotel condominiums at the other end of the Galleria, who are far closer to Key Cadillac than they would be to the Rivian dealer. And, you know, Cadillac is selling in their showroom EVs, and so they're closer. So I don't, I don't think that that's a fair comparison. So I think, I'm fully supportive. I think this is a different and a new way to sell cars, and it fits with the innovation that Galleria is looking for.
It is a lot of great points here today. Just a couple of things to think about as the presentation was going along, and I was listening to the responses. From a zoning perspective, right, I think this, this certainly fits as a conditionally permitted use. I think that, that makes a lot of sense here, especially it being a, not a combustion engine vehicle, but more of an electric vehicle. The questions around traffic and parking, I thought the team covered those well. I think having the dedicated parking spots is a good idea than having it randomly placed across the different lot sites, right? Because then you never know where it's going to be. But having a dedicated spot makes sense. And the location also makes sense, being having six spots, and no more than six spots. I think it's a high-demand area for sure. But of course, the Galleria management had to play a key role in determining the number of spots and locations. I trust that for their business, they, they made the best call there. The team answered my questions when it comes to the operational concerns, right? It being a location where you could feel, get an experience of what the vehicles are like. And, you know, it's not a place where you'll see Rivian users drive up to get it serviced, right? It's not that. They would go to St. Louis Park to get that done. And I think too, just a question on accessories versus parts, right? There's always a potential where we're selling things already, why not throw in a part that you need, and you don't have to drive that far if you live in Edina, right? And so the team, you know, kind of differentiated the two, one being something that gives you comfort in driving the vehicle as an accessory versus a part that makes a vehicle function, right? And we want to separate the two, and you go to St. Louis Park, that nearest dealership, if you need to, for parts, and then accessories you could pick up at the, at the Galleria site. So I thought that was a good response there. When it comes to setting precedents, right, I know this is a conditionally permitted use for sure. I am, and I appreciate the Galleria team for, you know, sharing why they want to have a close partnership with Rivian and not with Tesla or another vehicle. I'm sure there was some set of decisions and an assessment that was done that says, yeah, this is a good partner. Having a Tesla dealership three or four months ago was probably a risk. You don't want someone breaking in and setting fires. But I don't think Rivian is a Tesla, right? And so it's a, it's a, it's a new type of vehicle with different management that's trying to grow in the American market. So I think that makes sense. And from a tenant mix, I'm sure this one fits with the other tenants as we heard, you know, if it's next to a Yeti, that's a great spot. You buy a Yeti and you take it home, and then you get a Rivian delivered, and you put your Yeti in the Rivian, you go for a road trip. Community and the, and the economic impact, I think it, it makes sense, you know, the showroom idea. Now that we're going into an experiential world, right, in the Galleria area, right, you know, experiential shops like Pod Shack, they're doing golf, golf simulators, these kind of things are all experiential. And I think people like that, but I think the Galleria management would decide on how much experiential content they want to have in their, in their site, Rivian being one of them. And I think that makes sense. So I think overall, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good idea. I don't know if 25% charging makes a fire 25% bigger than if you've charged at 100%. I don't understand charging and fire risk that well. But I would have to assume that being a commercial vehicle, a lot of testing would have had been done to determine that this was a safe vehicle, and people have this in their homes today. So I don't see the fire risk there from a battery perspective as, as well. But again, it can be ignorance too, from my perspective. But overall, I like the concept. I like what they're trying to do. I think the service model makes sense, and it's a conditionally used permit, so I, I don't see any major flags here. So I've been supportive of this.
Okay, quick things. First, I think this clearly meets the requirements of the conditionally used permit as laid out by the code, and I agree with staff and their assessment there. None of the small concerns that we brought up today, I think negate any of the, or make it such that we don't meet these requirements for a conditionally used permit. Two, I would rely on the fire department and the building code, or I guess, our building department to work with the city attorney and then ultimately go to city council and impose any other additional conditions as needed before, I guess, the city council level to make sure that we're covered there based off of the information that we received today. And then finally, you know, I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity on the, on Commissioner Alkira's point, because I wasn't sure I understood it. So a conditional use permit, if we're granting it, we can put conditions on it, even if it's not required by the code, right? If we wanted to say, like, here we said you have to reserve six spots, you can only keep it at six spots for parking, right? That's not something that's specifically outlined in the code. We can make a recommendation for a condition to the council. They don't have to accept it, but we're certainly free to do so. So I didn't, I wanted to make it seem as if we're not, not in our ability to do so. If Cadillac came in and took away six EV charging spots, we could say, well, no, you need to replace them with six additional EV charging spots. So just, you know, we, as a planning commission, suggest conditions all the time on conditionally used permits that aren't specifically outlined by the code, and it's up to the city council to accept or reject those. So I'm not making a recommendation based on the EV charging spots and the information that I received from the gallery ownership and what their future plans are there. But I thought that was important to address, so.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what others have said. I think the factors that are relevant to whether a conditionally used permit can be granted or met clearly here, and for that reason, we'll be supporting it. Beyond that, I don't think it's, I think some of the conversation's interesting, but I don't know that it's our role to dictate the gallery how it wants to serve its clients, how it wants to do its business. That's just not, not really what we're responsible for. So thanks for coming, and I'll be voting a fair.
I too agree with a lot of the things my fellow commissioners have talked about tonight. I appreciate Commissioner Padilla's comment about being in other Rivian dealerships. I know I would feel much more comfortable walking into this dealership. I personally, well, I'm, I'm gonna stop. I think your business model is very different than a traditional dealership. I'm getting that sense from some of our questions, so I'm, I'm gonna take that back. But going, for me going into traditional dealership, I'm uncomfortable there. It's not a place that's welcoming for me. This seems like a lot, a lower bar to kind of step into and learn about something in a little lower pressure. So it seems more inviting to me. I know some people, obviously in Better Together feel differently about, about that, which is fine, right? They might enjoy that traditional kind of going to a dealership. But I think it also provides a different kind of experience for people. Like if a family goes and someone wants to go to this store, and someone gets to go to a different store, I mean, I think it provides more opportunities. I'm a client of Galleria. And I appreciate getting the information from the fire marshal, and I appreciate knowing the steps, that there are steps the city and the building department is taking to kind of address some of that. And that makes me comfortable. And that's it. Those are my questions. So I'm very supportive of, of this. Thank you.
Hi. I too was really kind of batting back and forth in my head, but Commissioner Padilla's reframing of it as a retail space, I started to think if this was selling electric bikes, and we're gonna, my concern was really with EV self-driving or not, they're different mechanics, and let's call it like an old-school car that some of us may have learned to drive on. And this idea of having a very congested parking lot that is kind of scary sometimes of year with how busy it is, and then people maybe hitting reverse and not, you know, like, so I was working through that. And then I was like, if it's an electric bike, we wouldn't be having this conversation, but you could still have people learning how to move about a parking lot who are maybe inexperienced at doing it. So I love that we're encouraging electric vehicles. I think it's the right demographic for Galleria. I think you're absolutely right. While this is a car-related business, this is a retail store where you just happen to have cars that you can drive outside, but you can also cross the street and get one at, at the Cadillac dealer that's also an EV, and you couldn't drive that, or you'd have to learn to drive that too. So thank you. I'm excited to have you in the city.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Again, I too am fully supportive of this. I, I see all the conditions for a conditionally used permit are met. I too have a unique perspective on the matter. My, my wife's a property manager and manages the shops at the West End. Three years ago, they incorporated Polestar Electric Vehicles into a showroom, went about the same process, and it's just seamless with the experience up there as it will be here. No, no relevant safety concerns or anything above the code, so I would strongly recommend we don't impose anything beyond the fire code. A code is there for a reason. They're nice-to-haves, but that's just going to cost people more money until it's code. So I would recommend approval of this without further conditions. Thank you. Anyone have a motion? Or further discussion?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
Just, six spots were requested, two upstairs were noted. There's two of the four charging stations down below that were being taken. Are there two others that are being considered? Or are those four down below all the charging stations downstairs? Or are there two adjacent that aren't?
Yeah, so currently there are four electric vehicle charging stations down below. Rivian will have two demo vehicle locations up there on the ground level. And then they will, they will brand two of the existing four charging stations. And then we will provide the electricity and power for two additional spots adjacent to those. So down below, there will be six total charging stations, four of them will be branded for Rivian.
Thank you.
I'd like to make, make a motion to recommend approval of the conditionally used permit for Rivian to operate an automobile agency selling new unused vehicles, 3510 Galleria.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
We have eight in favor, one opposed. The motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, that's it for our public hearings tonight. So now we move on to chair member comments. Thank you again for your time here. Don't worry, you can leave. You don't have to sit for this. Yeah. So any comments from anyone? See some shaking of heads?
Commissioner Day?
Mark your calendar for September, weekend of September 6th and 7th for Fall Into the Arts, if you haven't already planned on going. Great event. I'm part of the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, and we benefit greatly from that. So we put that on and bought proceeds from that event go to the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, which, if you're not familiar with that fund, you know, we basically provide, well, equipment, services, et cetera, whatever our fire and police department need beyond what they're currently given at the city level. So recently, we approved some funds for some mental well-being and physical well-being programs that they're going to work on, be signing up for for two years that go beyond their current health plans, which are very valuable to them in terms of addressing, you know, cardiac problems, PTSD, et cetera, and helping them work through that. So we support them in that regard, and Fall Into the Arts helps, helps fund those kinds of initiatives. So hope to see people there.
Thank you. All right. See no other comments. Staff comments?
Just an update from the last city council meeting. They, they took action on the town home project on Vernon, the removal of the single-family home and build the two duplexes that was approved. So that, that was a comp plan amendment. We'll be submitting that to Met Council. So likely this fall, you'd see some activity on that site. That's it.
All right. With that, then, we have one.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meetings been adjourned. Thank you, everyone.